Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting October 29th, 2018. It is 5:32 at the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being taped for cable and for YouTube viewing. Do we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're mainly here tonight to place our articles for the special town meeting on November 19th. We do have a street layout at 6:00 PM, so let's try to get through as many articles as we can. So you have your draft warrant in front of you. And so where we're starting is, and basically, we can place these as groups if you're comfortable with them, or we can place them separately. The first one is going to be reinstating the expenses of the municipal departments that were cut at the May town meeting. That's part A of Article 1. And part B, based on a request from the Finance Committee, because these were not things that were talked about in May, to appropriate similarly to the general budget, the amounts for executive searches for DPW and for Town Administrator, and for an addition of an amount of money to each of those line items.
So can I make a motion to place Article 1A and then Article 1B?
As presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Questions?
Well, just under discussion, I've just passed down a spreadsheet, and this isn't in final form. I was just working off a spreadsheet that was on the computer rather than reinvent the wheel. What I tried to show here was, as you can see, there's a, on the far left, the recommended budget for town meeting. There's the other shade, there's a shaded column of what was actually voted, what the reductions were. So I tried to plug in what the new numbers were, not only for restore, but any new numbers in the right-hand column, which would be the FY '19 budget. And that includes what Sheila was just mentioning, additional funds for two positions, also additional money for the two searches. And then, at the very bottom, I added, there was also a request from the chief, Police Chief, for additional money for the sergeant's contract. And you can see the total free cash that'll be necessary to fund. Actually, this would end up being, if you vote Article 1 and Article 2, that would be for both articles.
And you're okay with that, Bob? Both of these?
The way it's...
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So Article 2, we have $69,000 for a used holder, which we've been talking about for several years, for DPW.
Motion to place Article 2?
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Okay. The next, Article 3, is in accordance with our financial policies, oh, no, wait a minute. Article 3 is transferring from a couple of articles from prior meetings to pay the bill from the MWRA as well as the DCR. Now, that's the one where we received the letter regarding our fourth quarter payment, if you remember.
Hmm.
Right? Right. Well, we just under-budgeted, we'd sort of never know what the fee is going to be each year, so we were short by that amount. We're going to take it from a couple of articles, so this is not going to come out of our certified free cash.
Okay.
Motion to place Article 3?
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I'm going to skip over Articles, Article 4, just to wait. I think that the town clerk is coming, and she might want to speak to it.
Yep.
Now, Article 5, 6, and 7, if you'd like to do these as a group, you can. That's to place, in accordance with our financial policies, an amount of money out of free cash into our three savings accounts, OPAP Trust stabilization and capital stabilization.
Do you know what the money, the sum of money is?
So the goal is 5%. And Bob, I think we talked about, we've had a certified free cash number of just about $624,000. So we're looking at about $90,000 here, in total, across the three.
Yeah, I think on many of these, we have the sum rather than the actual number. Certainly, that'll be ready for the motions, and I'm looking for the exact free cash number now. I also have, that I can pass out if the board's interested, a sheet from the Department of Local Services just showing the history for Rutland over the last five years for free cash.
And those numbers are good with you, Bob?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
I make a motion to place Articles 5, 6, and 7?
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I'm going to skip over 8 until the town clerk gets here. Article 9, we have $879 for the purchase of a fax scanner printer for the library. Just for historical reference, this was brought up last year at a fall town meeting, but there was no backup information. And Bob, I believe she provided a significant amount of information this time?
Yep. She provided a nice spiral-bound folder for this one.
Okay.
Motion to place Article 9?
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? All right. Article 10, $50,000, as requested by the town treasurer, to proceed with foreclosure of 17 parcels currently in tax title.
$15,000, right?
$15,000.
Something like 50. Motion to place Article 10?
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Article 11, Fire Chief, who came in? Come on up. I think the last time we talked about this, there were a couple of questions, so you might as well.
As custodian of the Public Safety Building, I was requested by the police and fire personnel to bring forward this article. Currently, the fire station basement, the basement of the Public Safety Building has been historically used as the gym for the safety officers. Currently, the police association has raised over $15,000 to purchase all-new equipment, rubber floor matting and everything. The problem that we have, that we faced over the last several years, is that during the summer, the high humidity has rusted out all the old equipment that was there. So we're just looking to put this heater AC unit, split unit, similar to what we have here, in order to really alleviate those issues. Currently, right now, we do have additional vendors coming in on Wednesday, and we're hoping to get the price lower.
Thank you, Chief. Motion to place Article 11?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Article 12 is the $9,725 for the fence of Memorial Playground.
Well, we talked about this at the last meeting. It's got the recommendation of the Highway Department Superintendent. It's a big expense, but I think it's, the way it's been presented to us, I think it's a safety issue, so. I'd move to place Article 12.
Thank you. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Article 13, we're going to skip over until we do the laying of the ways, which is our 6 o'clock hearing. Article 14 as well. Article 15 is the marijuana, and I will skip that for now, just because I think we won't have time, and we're going to end up breaking in with the laying of the ways. So let's jump to Article 21, which is stormwater management. You have Gary here. So, just some history. Last year, we were presented with a stormwater bylaw. There were questions about it at the time. It was not placed on the fall town meeting, and Gary, your guess is as good as mine as to where that ended up going. Last year's version of the bylaw, it had had legal review. A couple of weeks ago, now Gary Weston Sampson provided us with their version, which I don't know that we got an answer as to whether it's a version that has been accepted almost word for word by another community, I'm assuming.
The question was, do they service the stormwater coalition? And the answer to that is no, they do not. That's done by Beals and Thomas.
Okay.
So the attachments, the bylaw and the attachments, I sent you will be specific, for the most part, to us. Now, they say it hasn't been mirrored, in part, to other communities, but it has been reviewed. I did shoot it off to legal. I did talk to Mr. Reed about that. We don't know if that was really necessary, but I was just trying to be safe. But it has been reviewed by Norman and Marilyn and others on the bylaw subcommittee, and they approved the content of it. Very important that this is put on the warrant as is part of the NOI process, known as an intent for stormwater management plan, which is a five-year plan, and beyond, actually. So, very important. I don't know what would happen if it's not accepted. I can't answer that, because they know we're making the attempt to get the stormwater bylaw finally in place. Now, Sheila and Skip, you guys probably remember, because go back eight or nine years when we did have Paul Cranston put together a stormwater bylaw, I'm sure that Norman remembers, and it just never went anywhere. The new, the NFTs permit didn't go through. Everybody was still mirroring the permit from the year before, the years before, so it wasn't an issue. Now it is. And you've had Mr. Sivian here from DEP, certainly me talking about it several times, so it's very important that we get this bylaw on the warrant.
Thank you. Through the chair, do you have any idea what the actual cost is going to end up costing us?
For just, for the whole, for the whole of stormwater?
Yeah, for the stormwater.
No, because, I don't, Skip, and the reason I don't, because there's a lot of in-kind services we can do as a department, so I don't, I don't have that figure, no. That's always negotiable, as it goes through anyway, but there's certain steps of the stormwater bylaw, or the permit, I should say, that have to be taken care of and satisfied.
And it's a five-year plan, correct?
Excuse me?
Is it a five-year plan?
It was a five-year permit plan initially, but it's gone, I think it's extended, Bob, has it gone to seven?
I'm not sure, Gary.
Okay. Minimally, yes, five-year plan. That's what it always was in the past. We just had to wait for New Hampshire, actually, to pass theirs, and then Massachusetts mirrored that one.
Through the chair, if that question came up at the special town meeting, would you be in a position to come up with maybe a rough idea on what?
Of cost of the...
Of the cost, yeah.
Of the tasks associated with the plan?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Maybe have an answer for this tale?
I can also have, I can have the engineers there, too, if you want a more detailed explanation of what's going on. That's your call.
I'll take your word, just so we seem more informed if the populace asks that question.
Okay.
Feel more comfortable.
So, from a timeline perspective, Gary, I keep going back to the work that got put in a year ago, and I'm just trying to figure out if we have the time to compare the two, and if it's worth doing that. I mean, obviously, we've trusted Weston Sampson for years with a lot of our projects, so it was just an odd thing to sort of be starting from scratch two, two and a half weeks ago, when we knew we had one in the books that had had work done. And I know I haven't had a chance to really take a look at them both, to see what the differences are. I don't know if you did. I don't know if Weston Sampson did.
No, that I, I know I went through Weston and Sampson when I was working with the bylaw subcommittee, because they, we actually mirrored Spencer's and just changed the names, because that was pretty much a template for a lot of communities, so we did that. It was a lot more, the reader, actually, it was the Reader's Digest version as compared to what we had as a town. And as far as I know, Norman, correctly, if I'm wrong, the bylaw committee overwhelmingly accepted it. But as you said, as you started this off, I don't know how that got lost in the shuffle. I don't know what happened, because we were ready to accept that at annual.
Yeah, I had looked it up today. It looked like it was even before annual, that the last activity we had was last October. We had the STM draft warrant with the stormwater bylaw on it. It went over to KP with questions about the new MS4 permit. And then, and then, I don't know.
Yeah, last, if you're talking October of '17.
Yeah.
As far as my recollection and my memory goes, I don't think the NFTs permit was fully in place at that time.
Yeah, and I think maybe they were concerned that the...
Probably what happened.
Okay.
They just weren't, it's not that we weren't ready for it. We had a bylaw ready, but we just didn't know if it matched or satisfied the NFTs.
Did it?
Apparently not, because it was taken off. It wasn't taken off by me. It was taken off by someone for another reason, so I'm not going to try to explain for anybody.
I'm just going to, yeah, I'm just going to read what Margaret wrote. She had asked, asked Jeff Blake to pause his review of the stormwater bylaw article until further clarification from the bylaw subcommittee, which was received. He was to continue review based on compliance with the existing Clean Water Act, rather than the new MS4 permit requirements. With the subcommittee at the time, understanding that the bylaw might have to be amended, rescinded, or replaced as early as next year, meaning here we are.
Here we are.
Okay. So, is the current bylaw, and I don't have it in front of me, in compliance with MS4 or with clean water?
It's the current bylaw that Weston and Sampson put together.
Yes, the one you gave us two weeks ago.
Satisfies stormwater, the stormwater management, which is in part, is also encompasses MS4.
So it's, okay. So it's the new, it's based on the new MS4 and not what was existing a year ago, which was the Clean Water Act?
Right.
Which has changed. Okay.
So I'll make a motion to place Article 21 on the warrant.
Second.
Comment?
You notice the underlying language from council? I think that, I mean, she's responding to her, that's in regard to her recent review of the bylaw, and so she's obviously made some changes, but I think there's time to look at it with those changes, because the article itself can refer to a handout in the hands of the voters. And in fact, I would ask the board, and Lauren sent language, that the board approve the warrant, subject to review and approval by town council on the form of the articles, and authorize the town administrator to make such changes that he deems appropriate, based on such a review. So with that language, some of these articles, like this one, can be a little more refined.
I know that, and I know she's not here yet, but I know that the town clerk had indicated she wanted, she would have liked to have had a final, final copy of all of the bylaws in time for posting, but are we thinking that might not be viable, since it needs to be posted? Well, I think we were gunning for Friday, right?
Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
I would think they could be ready, yeah.
Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Article 22 is in regards to the two, and we did combine them, pilot agreements going along with the solar project.
Who submitted this one?
Well, this is a follow-up to the RFP that the town issued for the solar parcels near Marshka Park. So this is, the town has already approved the lease, and this is to approve the tax agreements or the pilot payments.
And low of payment. Okay. Or low of taxes.
Are there motions?
Motion to place Article 22?
No.
Okay. Oh, yeah. I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 23 is in regards to water enterprise free cash, and it lists one item, but we actually have a longer list of water enterprise free cash items, and Bob can go into greater detail, but in conversations with the accountant, the water enterprise free cash account is very cash-heavy right now, for a reason, but there's a long list of things that need to be done, and that's why the money is there, and it might be time to consider that at this meeting.
I had sent a list, or a draft article, to council, and she sent back an article, which I can forward to the board, but it would incorporate all of the suggestions from the DPW director to be taken out of water available funds. So that would include Article 23 and Article 24, there just, I'm sorry, Article 25, there just wasn't time to make the changes in the warrant yet, you know, particularly if the board wanted to review, having an article that would incorporate all of those expenditures out of water enterprise.
So there's just about $900,000 right now in water free cash. We have a project coming up, and Gary can go into it a little more if we need to, but a larger project that's going to take out about $300,000 of that. Setting that aside, the packet that you just got, I think we did the totals this afternoon, Bob, it came to about 150?
Yeah, 155, something like that.
55, is that your total? So, I don't know, Gary, do you, we have about 10 minutes. Do you want to take the time to just go through these real fast, or do you want to wait for people to have questions? Well, this is the first time the board is seeing this packet, so we could whip through it really quickly, or?
We can go through it. I don't expect to be a lot of questions about it.
I'm just passing down a list that we got from Gary that shows everything that would be, everything under the water enterprise that would be included in that article.
So this is the short version of the packet you got. The packet is the backup.
Okay, so starting at the, I'm sorry, Bob, I really didn't, I didn't, wasn't paying attention, but starting at the top one is the processor, necessary component, it is the brains of the water treatment plant. It takes care of the flushes and backflows and chemical content that goes into, obviously, the treatment of the water that we distribute. This is a proprietary issue. It, last time it was upgraded was about eight or nine years ago. It was under the recommendation of those that installed to get this. If we do not have this, if this were system to, this system were to fail, we could still distribute water and treat water, but would be manually, and it would be a much more intense process, and we would not be able to until we had the processor give the reports, or print the reports that we need for DEP. So, you know, now the system is working. It hasn't failed. But, as I keep saying, it's 22-year-old plant, and now that we have the money in it, there's certain upgrades, and plus, we get the recommendation of it, and we feel we should replace.
So Gary, just a clarification, that processor is in, remember, you gave me the list for the special town meeting, that's in addition?
This one was in addition, yeah.
So that's, so that's a number that would have to be added to the 155?
You have that in the packet you have now, but it wasn't in the initial.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions on that one? No? Water replacement, the water line replacement, obviously, this existing water line is about 50 years plus old. It's one of the original or oldest developments in town. It is a constant problem, especially in the wintertime, of severe breaks and water loss. A lot of the section is band-aided, some of it has not really burst yet, but we fully expect it to. So I've asked for 72.9. Obviously, we don't have the money in water free cash to do the whole neighborhood, which is about 1.7. I've asked for the 72.9, which will encompass the engineering portion of the whole neighborhood, and then we'll do the water line replacement in segments, which includes all appurtenances. It is expected for the first phase, it would be about $386,000 for the water line and a pertinent, a pertinence replacement. We won't have an exact figure until the engineering study is done. But again, this is, the engineering portion of this will encompass the whole neighborhood, not just the portion that we're going to try to pay for the, on Phase 1.
I have a question for that. Once the engineering's done, it's not going to need to be re-engineered to continue?
No, and that's why I wanted to do it this way, because if we didn't, Leah, honestly, we'd be paying, for the sake of argument, $40,000 for engineering, and then the second time to come in and do Phase 2, which I expect there'll be three phases, there'll be another 40. So now you're getting up to over 100...
Right.
To engineer the whole development.
Yeah.
Nothing will change in that development, and the items available to us, they have to change the engineering aspect.
Thank you.
Gary, I have a quick question. Were all those streets accepted by the town?
In Calerio?
Calerio.
Yes, sir.
Because wasn't there an issue with storms?
Yes, but that's outside of, that's outside of Calerio. That's down off of Edith and Karen.
Okay.
It's outside of the Calerio development.
Thank you.
Now, the next one is short money. I didn't fill out a, but you do have a copy, and so everyone knows, with the exception of Weston and Sampson. The names that I have here are for the board only of companies. These are low prices.
I know.
All right. That's for leak detection, that also helps us with our unaccounted for water, which, as I've stated before, was up as high as 33 to 35%, and now we're at 15, but we have to do better. We have to do better than that 15. We have to get it to 10 or below for three years. Important, it's just an important aspect of our antiquated water lines.
Yeah.
The next one, again, of no company name, is for a camera system, security for the water treatment plant, gate, building, and surroundings.
So where is it going?
Excuse me?
Where is it going?
Well, it'll be a monitor system that would be mounted on the building.
Internal, like external, coming up the dispatch, coming up the...
That hasn't been discussed, Skip, I'm sorry. It would be a wise idea if you could get it, a straight shot cable back through to dispatch.
So, I mean, what's the sense, if we're not going to come, so somebody can watch it, why are we doing it?
This was a suggestion by others. This was not my article. I didn't, I didn't put this on, so I, all I can, all I can say, honestly, is, again, and I think I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, all of this stuff should have probably been done...
9/11.
Post 9/11.
Yeah.
And that's when all of our, not ours, the Rutlands, but statewide, nationwide, water systems were shut down to the public, and extreme monitoring and security systems were put in place.
I know you do. I know you do.
I don't know, this never came, I heard nothing about this, so it's just...
Well, I think, yeah, I did give this to the finance last week. As Sheila did say that she hadn't seen this packet before, but I did talk to finance about this last week. I did hand it, I handed the packet out there, but this is...
No, no, okay. No, I just...
Skip, which one are you asking about? The CCTV?
Huh?
You asked about the CCTV?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's it going? I mean, it's, it's like I, it's like, it'll be just like what I got at my farm, to watch all my animals and people breaking the fences and all that, but if it doesn't go somewhere, then somebody's not watching it.
You're right, and it's a good point, and I agree with you. So that's why I'm saying, the wise point to have it transmitted would be dispatch, because the plant is not manned 24/7.
So if you look at the scope, there's an Ethernet card to allow connection to the internet, intranet for remote view, so assuming we can get our IT involved in this, we can either, we can also send that connection even over to dispatch for, not all, not all the time, but for write for views sometimes. To be honest, Skip, the reason it came up was because a few months ago, I watched a car just drive up into the, into the water treatment plant. I didn't know who it was, it wasn't a local, and I followed him up there. Nobody knew we were there, nobody, you know, it's time, it's well beyond time.
Well, if they closed the gate, locked the gate, it wouldn't be able to drive down there.
Well, and that's on the list, too.
Yeah, but they don't close the gate. And before we go any further with it, we're going to have somebody, other people watching this, well, how the union's going to take this? The dispatch, or whoever's watching this thing. Somebody's going to get paid to it. So this 500-dollar item is going to be right off the charts by the time we get through.
Well, who puts it off the charts? I mean, I can buy a, I can buy a $300 Nest Cam for my house and look at it on the internet and know what's going on, and also, a lot of these systems are taping.
That's you. But this is the town, we got to pay somebody to do this. You're paying yourself to do it, but, you know, we're going to have to pay somebody to do this. I mean, I'm not against it, it's just that if we're going to do it, we got to do it right, otherwise, we have no sense doing it at all.
I agree.
That's the way I look at it.
I agree.
Well, what would you like to see, Gary?
I mean, you've got $4,500, you think it's doable? Do you think sufficient security monitoring system can be acquired for $4,500, or is this something you want to circle back with?
Yeah, the only piece I don't know, honestly, Jeff, is about taping it down to dispatch, I don't, I don't know what that would take.
But now you're going to pay somebody to watch it, and we got unions involved.
It's not a question of paying somebody to watch it, Skip, I mean, you've got a 24/7 dispatch with, with other security cameras there and the TV set up for them. My recommendation would be that it would be just monitored 24/7. If you're going to monitor a water treatment plant, monitor, and I'm honestly, I don't care, I don't really care what the union thinks about it, because nobody's spying on the union, we're securing our, we're putting some security on our resources.
I don't think you necessarily have to watch it 24 hours a day.
It's just that it's monitored, if something happens, you can address it. That's all.
A DVR system.
Just like they do your building, just like they do the public safety complex, it's not like they're on, and if something, if they see something, then they, they catch it, which I'm sure they would, it's right in front of them.
And if things, there, if something happens, the teams are there to go back to.
Okay, so we're going to put a pin in this, everybody take your packet from Gary, side aside.
Okay, so I can leave now?
It's a little late, sorry, Gary.
I can leave?
No.
Have a good week, Gary.
All right, and then, do we have people outside for the laying of the ways, is that what's going on out there? So you have three packets in front of you that were presented by the builder, the builder's attorney actually, received back in September regarding a series of roads that are being requested to be accepted by the public. Our first step in that is for the board of selectmen to do a laying of the ways. You've got Arrowhead, you've got Cleveland Circle, Horizon Road, and Grizzly Drive, and then separately, because it's not part of the subdivision, you have Glenwood Place.
This is all under Article 13.
Well, that's separate, so the first thing the board has to do is do the laying of the ways, that's for our meeting tonight. After that, we'll return to the warrant for the special town meeting and vote whether or not to actually place these roads onto the special town meeting warrant for approval by town meeting, for those roads to be approved, okay? Okay, so the office, the attorney's office provided us with some documentation, you, I believe we also, did I see you, Bob, you came in with as-bills?
Plans, we had some plans out there we can bring in, Gary has plans for Glenwood, I believe.
I've got some in my car, you talked about Bear Hill, I got a set of plans in my car.
Okay, but we have the as-bills? No, I'm just bringing up that they were brought in, and I saw plans come in in a box.
We have the plans on the table out there.
Okay, great.
Oh, okay, okay.
Madam Chair, when you, when you said this was brought in by the attorneys, are we talking town council, are we talking?
No, so these, these packets were presented by the builder's attorney.
By builder's attorneys.
However, we have motions in front of us that have been reviewed by council for all five in total of the roads in question. So the planning board is here, could you, would you like to make an official statement, Norm, about the five roads in question, or some version? Come on up.
Are you talking, first of all, about Bear Hill?
We can start wherever you like, I, I think at this point, anything that's outstanding, we would want to know about before we lay the ways.
Basically, we have worked with Quinn Engineering, we have gone through, as you remember a while back, there was a long, long list of deficiencies, those deficiencies have all been corrected or addressed, and we have a statement from Quinn Engineering that the subdivision is built in substantial conformance to the, the plans of the subdivision.
Okay.
And to subdivision regulations.
And that's all four of those roadways?
In Bear Hill, yes.
Okay.
Could you name the roadways, just because, I mean, we have one or four listed here?
Cleveland Circle, Horizon Road, Grizzly Drive, and Arrowhead.
Okay.
All right, way, excuse me. Money due?
There is still money due, however, Quinn Engineering, we've had some very, very recent inspections over there, they bill at the end of the month, we're expecting that we will be getting a final bill from them before town meeting, usually comes in the first week in November, and we have also informed Mr. Blair that that is one of the conditions of our recommendation, is that that account be brought to a zero balance, and I talked with him verbally, he has agreed now that he will do so in a timely fashion.
So there's a final bill coming for this month, which isn't quite done yet, and then some other things that will be paid in total prior to November 19?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Glenwood Place?
Glenwood Place, I guess, first thing I just have to say is that this, at least to me, is less of a planning board issue in that it's not a subdivision, and as a matter of fact, I believe it was a request by Mr. Blair to, I believe, selectmen, to simply accept this additional 347 feet, or whatever it is, of Glenwood Place. The conditions that, that were put on that acceptance, again, almost all reflected back to Mr. Kelleher, was that the, some drainage had to be put in, the surface had to be gravelled or some sort of a suitable top coat on, on the, on the surface, and that a turnaround large enough for the town's biggest piece of equipment would be provided at the end of the public way. And I'll let Gary speak for it, but in conversations with him, those have all been addressed.
So after the approval not required from the planning board, because of the length at the time of Glenwood Place, the planning board will not have a recommendation on town meeting floor about that particular road, right?
I don't know, you know, we can, I don't know if it would really be particularly appropriate since, you know, it wasn't a submitted subdivision plan, you know, that had to go through the approval process.
Okay.
If selectmen or the moderator requests, we can certainly give a recommendation.
Does anybody have any questions for planning board chair?
I'd like to hear from the highway superintendent.
Thank you, Norm.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, 300 and whatever you said, Norm, 323 or 327 feet from Glenwood Place was at the end of, obviously, Glenwood Road extension. It was miscommunicated or misunderstood way back when that that was initially a town road, and I'll refer to the infamous flagpole, which I consider to be the boundary, because I did measure that myself. So anyway, that was all straightened out, as Mr. Blair decided to move forward on that, and I had a couple of conditions in order to pass for, as far as a DPW goes, town, town acceptance, which those conditions have been fulfilled, and I do have an as-bill with me for showing. But as far as a DPW goes, Jeff, to answer your question, culverts haven't been taken care of, drainage is taken care of, effective turnaround for our snow plows is in place, so I would approve that road.
Thanks, sir.
Chief, anything on any?
Nope.
No? Okay.
All our issues are addressed.
Great. Seems like there's a lot of members of the public from the neighborhood, is there anybody who wanted to speak prior to the laying of the ways?
Sylvia, I can, start.
Okay, come on up, you did name it.
I'm not new to this forum. I have accent, so if you have a problem, let me know. So I'm here for Glenwood Place, Sylvia Rosbassan, 27 Glenwood Place.
Thank you.
Not new to this forum, going back months, years. Glenwood Road, I'm not going to go back to the extension, it's not on a public road. I know there were plans for past 20 years or 40 years that identified that there was potentially a carriage road, right, but it was never a road. It was illegally, the trees were illegally cut down, road was built, no one was having any information about it. Right now, we have stones buried under that road, so in order for the town to accept the road, I think the, the stones should be taken out of the road, right, and rebuilt as it should be, based on the standards, right? I, as the resident, my taxes are going up every year, $300, $400, I do not want to pay for this road. That road should be still be owned privately by the residents, and I do not want to pay for it. I disagree with the extension, I disagree with, with all these extensions of 375 feet.
Thank you. Gary, can we just clarify, the first section of Glenwood Place is under Chapter 90, it's accepted?
That's correct, it's on the mass dock road inventory list.
And relative to what this resident is saying, how deficient is Glenwood Place compared to the majority of our town roads, from end to end?
Of your dirt roads.
Dirt roads, yeah.
Extra, extra money was put into the extension by the contractor, not at the town's expense, we went up and helped spread it. It's just like any other dirt road in town, it has to be maintained, it has to be graded, it has to be compacted, so we expect that issue with, with town roads, and I see it in some cases, a little, a step above what we have for some other dirt roads in town.
So Sassawanna, Brentonall?
Sassawanna, yeah, it's a prime example, take a look at Sassawanna, take a look at Brentonall, we have a lot of problems there, and we just can't, because of ledge or other reasons, we just can't get in there and do anything with it.
So you're talking about five inches, right, on the top coat, right, how about what is buried below? Has anyone ever considered that, that there are stones that are buried? I live there, I have seen what was happening, I have seen how bacon cut the trees down and buried the stones. That has to be taken care of before the town accepts the road. I'm not talking about the top coat, top coat looks beautiful.
So you're, just so I'm clear, you're saying that in the extension portion that we're talking about tonight, 324 seven feet?
Was not constructed properly.
Exactly.
No, but there, but that there are, there's stumping that needs to be done underneath the surface that was put down?
There were stones buried, and then the fill was put on top of it.
What kind of fill is on there, Gary?
It's gravel, and then we put some ABC, but that road, that road that went through to Princeton was there long before.
There was no road, that, what I'm talking about, those 400 feet, there was no road. The road was built, the road ended by, by fill.
By the flagpole, that's what we talked about many times, but.
And the, the rest that we're talking about right now, 400 feet, was built on top of that. So there's stones buried, you can go over and inspect the site, everybody has been there several times, so this is nothing new to this forum. I don't know why are we talking about this, like this is a new stuff. I have been here, well, a year ago, a couple of years ago, we have been talking about the same stuff, and still the same, and now the town is accepting it. You know, it's like, this is, it's, it's like deja vu for me. I'm here, every single meeting, Glenwood Place come up, and nothing has been done by this forum, nothing has been done by planning board, it's, it's, you guys got to step up the game here.
So as you know, planning board does not really have jurisdiction anymore, because it's not a subdivision, so this is just an extension of an existing roadway.
So they allowed the road to be built, and now they taking their hands off, right, and they putting it in your hands, right?
Right.
So someone has to go back and say, okay, let's just fix this, and then put it in your hands, right?
So I think the problem is, what we're hearing is, the things that our DPW superintendent wanted were done, the drainage, the culvert, the turnaround on those 324 feet, and that relative to the condition of our other dirt roads in town, this is commensurate, but you think it's worse?
It's, it's worse, yeah, the stone will, will rotten, right, what, it's going to take two, three years, right, and the residents will pay for it? I don't want to pay for it, honestly.
So this is not the first time that the board prior to us has heard the allegation of stumps being used improperly as fill? Has anyone or any entity investigated the previous claim?
I have not, I've been down there many times, the chair, the past chair of the board, and I have actually driven to almost the end of it, and quite honestly, I have never seen a stump buried in that roadway, because I wouldn't allow that.
Well.
And what's, what's past the 327 feet, or whatever it is, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number, I have not had to care for, I have not had to look at.
Was there an inspection process through our town inspector when that road was being constructed?
That would be Gary.
Just me. And I spent a lot of time, and the rest of the board can tell you, Jeff, I spent a lot, we've talked about this, like Sylvia says, for several years now, so I've spent a lot of time down there, trying to satisfy everyone's needs with, with putting, if you will, the initial part of the extension in a more concrete condition, because there was truck, truck traffic, I have closed that road to trucks because of the season, and I'm certain Mr. Blair can tell you that, because I closed all his truck traffic going through because of what the heavy trucks were doing in a wet season. I've kept an eye on that road, and quite honestly, I've never seen a stump buried in what will be the roadway, never.
Through what?
And if I had, I, he would have dug it out.
Gary, through what? Glenwood Place is a dead end, right?
Well, not anymore.
No, no, not, no, not Glenwood Place, well, yes, Glenwood Place bears off to the right, and that's a dead end going to Princeton, Glenwood Place extension bears off to the left, and as far as the town is concerned, to the flagpole was a dead end.
Right.
Because the rest wasn't a public road. But now with the additional 300 feet, that would make it, to that, to that point, still a dead end.
Still a dead end, which is why we have the turnaround, because you, I'm just, you talked about truck traffic as if it was a throughway.
No, the turnaround for, is for our, for MC equipment, and for DPW trucks for snow and ice situations, turnaround.
Right, so why was there truck traffic?
Construction, construction, for the houses, that's all.
Through the chair, ma'am, other than your testimony, is there any evidence, do you have any evidence of what you allege, the stumps being put into the ground, any photographs?
I'm sure I have already provided to the planning board.
The planning board has a photograph of the stumps being placed in there?
Yes, as well as illegally building the road. We, we're talking about events that are taking place for past couple of years, this is, this is.
So I, I think the issue we have now is that regardless of what happened, and we're going back now, at least a year and a half, right, Norm, with the approval not required, so we're not talking about a subdivision, for our board, we're only talking about an extension of an existing town road, I, it is probably at this point in your best interest to have the town take over that portion of the tree of 324 feet, that extension to an existing road, with the improvements that were done based on requests by our chief, by our DPW superintendent, because then it will be plowed in the winter and cared for to the extent we can, as we do the other dirt roads in town. I don't know how often you get the chance to drive Sassawanna, Brentonall, parts of Irish, I guess, are at least still dirt, yeah, one part of Irish, but yeah, there's, there's periods of the year where they get really rough.
Maybe there should be a condition, if the town accepts the road, I mean, within the next five years, the developer should be taking care of, of fixing the road?
Uh.
Because it, the, I do, I honestly, I do not want to pay for repairs of that road, and my taxes are going up every year, $300, $400, I do not want to cover that.
I don't, I think once we do it, this, the town is going to be accepting that, so it's not something we revisit.
So think about that, right, there is serious allegations, right, that this is happening, right, maybe in under certain conditions, the town should be accepting it, right? Because the town is also accepting the expenses, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it, it's why we, we try to make sure that everything is buttoned up prior to doing this.
Yeah, so if there is no way out of this, right, then the town should be probably thinking about accepting it under certain conditions, the next five years, you know, the stones will rotten, so the developer will have to take care of fixing up the road.
Who plows your road now?
The town. That section has been ever plowed.
Oh.
Yeah.
Only to the flagpole, only to the flagpole, this is, the last 300 feet, we don't, we don't touch that, Jeff.
Yeah.
And Sylvia is correct, there were a lot of trees taken, there were trees taken down as a result of pole hearings, to put poles up, but that road was already in place, nobody's going to dig up a road to dump the stump. And further down as the road was built, to the 300 feet, there were trees, there were trees taken down in the way to allow for house lots, but again, the road was in place, most of it, except for the additional gravel, you're not going to fit a stump on top of that and then cover it with gravel without seeing it. And I, and I, tremendous honor of respect for Sylvia, we've talked many times, but I've not seen, I don't, there was no room to put a, bury a stump in that road, so if poles were taken down for driveways or house, I mean, I'm sorry, trees were taken down for driveways or house construction, and it was put on the owner of the property, their land, that's way out of my jurisdiction. And it was, oh, well, there were some low spots, but not, not in the way of the, the additional 320-plus feet.
There was a big hill, there, there was a chance to bury the stones.
There was a big hill, but not, on the, on the roadway itself, there was a, a hole, pretty much in some of it to the left, but outside of the, the plan of the roadway.
How many more buildable lots are still in play on Glenwood Place? How many more houses are left to be built, haven't been started yet?
You asking me?
All right, ma'am, whoever knows the answer.
Well, are you talking about the, the part of road that we're asking to be accepted? Or, okay, so there's no more left to be built there? I mean, there's one that's, that needs to be started, but those six homes that are, that contain that are, are sold.
So.
After that, it's prior road.
Beach. Beach, beach, which is very close. It's exactly the end of, of this extension.
So there are six finished homes on Glenwood Place that encompass the three hundred twenty-four extended feet. We are talking about the town road?
No.
No.
Some of them are on the town road.
Some of them are already there.
Yes.
So how many are there?
Up to lot four is on the town road, the driveway for lot four. Lot five is built and people live there. And lot six is built and people live there. Lot four is under construction.
So.
Lot three is not under construction yet. Lot two is under construction and lot one, no, lot two people live in and lot one is under construction.
Out of eleven.
Three are under construction.
Two, two are under construction.
Two are, and one's unbuilt?
One's unbuilt and three are sold.
That's.
Of the six.
Six.
Of the six. Three are left to be built.
No. Three are sold, people live in them.
Yep.
Lot two, lot five and lot six.
Okay.
Lot one and four are being built right now. Lot four is supposed to close in the next few weeks. And lot three is gonna be under construction as soon as I have all the people's paperwork.
So three, three houses not done yet?
No, lot three.
No, there's three houses not done yet.
All right, completed, people aren't living, that's correct, that's correct.
Lot four is being built, lot three is to be built. What about lot one?
It's being built.
It's under construction now.
Under construction.
But there were originally eleven that were having approval to be built, so.
So where are the other five? Where'd they go?
At the end of that extension.
They're on private road.
So it's still private, but what will happen is you'll build them and then ask for another extension?
Exactly.
No, you wanna keep them private?
I, I don't know.
Glenwood, Glenwood Place and then Glenwood Place extension, you're assuming it will stay private?
No, Glenwood Place extension is part of this road. But past the end of that three hundred and twenty feet that you're at, we're asking to have be accepted, it will stay private. They already have a homeowners association for those extra lots that are down there. This was, this was always a town road, but there was confusion when we did the plans. And I sold houses to people, we did the plans. We had information that said that the road went to a certain point. The public road went to a certain point. Further investigation and we found out that the road only went to the flagpole, as Gary puts it. So, we came to the board last year, or last spring. And you would, you would said that you couldn't put them on last spring. You wanted to wait till this fall, the fall town meeting to put it on. It's an extra three hundred and twenty feet that we were actually under the impression was already public way. But it turns out that it wasn't.
Let's just, I, I don't really wanna go down this road, but let's back up. You needed it to not be a public way, so that you needed, you got an approval not required. So that it wasn't, it, yeah.
No.
But we know, it's fine.
I'd much rather have it be a public way, Sheila, than a private way.
Now you do, of course.
No, 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 that has nothing, that had nothing to do with this. No, you're absolutely, that's not correct.
It doesn't matter, right? Water under the bridge, doesn't matter. We, I, I think, I think Gary, based on this conversation, my only question now is, with three houses still to be built, you've closed the road to construction trucks for the season. If we accept it and when we talk about how much wear and tear our dirt roads take from just the normal traffic of people who live there. I mean, look at Brenton, I think is a perfect example of construction traffic on Brenton and what it's done to that road. Is it an appropriate time to accept Glenwood Place with construction still happening?
And, y- you know, there, there are trucks, hundred trucks per day, right, bringing fill in, right, constructors. I, I, and seriously, maybe, like I told you, possibly accepting it under certain conditions. But now, speaking of that, there are gonna be five more houses on the end of that road.
Right.
So, do you really wanna take those charges? If you do, then that's fine. Keep my taxes as they are for next five years. Yeah, exclude me from that. I know it's impossible, but. But you know, you know, I'm not rich enough, or I would say wealthy enough to be covering, you know, expenses for the town or for um, certain developers, right? Um, you know, I think the town should be taking care of that or, or ignore it and, and keep it as it is until everything settles down, everything is finished, and then we can have the same forum.
This is along the same lines, and maybe Mr. Blair, you can answer this question probably best. On the private, the private way that will remain private way, the Glenwood Place extension. In the plans we see now, we see lot seven and lot eight off of that. Are there additional lots? How many of those houses are constructed or how many still need to be constructed, I guess?
All of them. Lot seven, eight, nine and ten, I still own. I sold lot eleven. So lot seven, eight, nine and ten would be like a private driveway. People who live there would have a homeowners association, they'd be responsible, plan and maintain. See, private roads, I.
My question was, those houses still need to be built, correct? So that's going to be additional construction traffic going down? It's not, it's not only those three-ish that are on the, the public way, lot one, three and four, that are almost done or in process? But then it's also going to be additional construction traffic to build on that private way?
Well, we've had construction traffic, yes.
I'm asking.
There's more houses to come.
But not, we're not building a road. We're just building houses, which we do on every public or private road, we build plenty of them on Brenton. That's, that, that type of construction traffic, I'm not so sure if that's what Gary meant by that. I think he meant the big trucks that we were bringing in to bring gravel in and things like that. And at the planning board and Gary's request and requirements, we brought in, we brought in enough ABC, was it ABC that covered it?
Six hundred, six hundred tons.
Six hundred ton of, we, we fixed up the road for the town. We put, we did that so that we could all work together and build houses. I mean, there, it's a, that, most of that was on public way. I mean, I have to be able to bring a truck on a public way to build a house. I mean, it's, it's, if, if there's a buildable lot there, well, why would you say that to anybody else? To, to think that I buried stumps under a road is ludicrous. You don't bury stumps under a road unless it's deep enough that you can get them covered, but you can't bury, you're not supposed to bury stumps anyway. So, that, that's out. Uh, that road has been there for at least a couple of years now. It hasn't even moved. It's, it's, it's in good shape. So, I mean, I don't know what you saw, but it was probably, the, the stumps were probably going on the lots. So I, I mean, none of this, the road.
So why did you build the road? If there was a road, why did you cut, had to cut the trees down and build the road?
So I, can I, I'm just gonna stop this. So Norm, obviously, I think we as a board can see why the planning board at this point, you know, needs to pass this off. We're in a weird gray area here. This would be a different conversation if this were a subdivision, but because it's not, it's an extension to an existing road with houses on it, and what happens beyond that existing road is not really our business, unfortunately. And again, if this were a subdivision, Norm would have a greater role, Norm's board would have a greater role. We're just, we're not there. So, I mean, Gary, I think the question still stands, knowing what we know of the construction that still needs to happen on what is currently a private way from the flagpole up, including the extension, is this an appropriate time to accept those three hundred twenty-four feet?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, does anybody have any more questions?
Um, last question. Gary, uh, is there any equipment or technology to check? Like a sonar checking for any type of voids in a, in a road similar to like, you know, maybe the uh, the gas company might do, just, you know, checking for leaks? Is there any type of equipment that could be borrowed to check to see if there's any gaps?
Any stumps?
Yeah.
Anything should be there? Um, uh, without um, saying something really sophisticated and expensive like sonar, sonar, I would, I would know. I mean, I've seen no depressions on that roadway. The first sign of a stump or erosion underneath, underneath the, the road level erosion, water would be a depression. And I've seen no depressions. And I've certainly, and I've been down there, Jeff, I've certainly seen, I wouldn't, and people know me in town, I would not allow a stump to be buried under a roadway. Whether it was private or public, because if the, if the hope or the plan was for somebody to turn a public road into a private way, I knew there was stumps there, that would be my, that would be my argument from day one.
Right. I'd love to see any photos that would exist.
Sure. I will, I will, I will bring something for um, next time. But, so, so I'm, I'm going to back to your comments, um. Uh, what do you guys have to lose if you you know, stop this for a couple of years?
Step it back?
Yeah. Nothing, right? There is nothing to lose, right? Right? So I ha- I have something to lose, right, but um, this forum, right, has nothing to lose, right? So.
But we have a job to do in response to a legitimate request by.
So put it in the backlog, you know, this can always come back, right? There is really nothing to lose at this moment, right?
I understand your frustration. I just, at this point, unfortunately, I'm not sure that we're doing you or any of the people living on your road a service if we don't move this forward.
Sure, so, so whoever purchased those homes, they were under, they, under understanding that the road will be plowed by the developer. That was the agreement.
That's not true. That's not true.
Now we are trying to accept the roads to be the public, right, road, town road.
That is not true. Those people.
It'll be plowed up to the turnaround at this point.
Right? Yes.
If we, if we accept it.
So the, so honestly, there is really nothing to lose for the town, right? The, the residents currently, right, that are living on the road, they should be, they should be taken by, taken care of by the developer, right, as originally agreed.
I'm not taking care of it.
I can't, we can't speak to any agreement the developer had on a, on what was currently, you know, written as we're sitting here, a private way. I suppose there is always the risk, you know, we're not, we're not the be all, end all. We can lay the ways tonight, we can place the article and the warrant tonight. And the town meeting floor could decline to accept your road based on what you might say at the special town meeting floor on November nineteenth. If that were the case, um, it's again, because it's not a subdivision, it's a little questionable about plowing. I gotta be honest. It, it's a very gray area for us at this point. It was a very different discussion a couple of years ago. But now, it's just, houses is on an extended road that's partly a town road.
I can guarantee you, we're gonna have this same discussion in a year, okay?
Yeah, we might.
And in two years. More houses are gonna be built down there, right? He's gonna be extending the road more and more, right? So, so, w- well, someone, some, s- you know, you, you have the, the power to stop this. And I have been asking for the same stuff a year ago when he was finishing up the, the, the road, right? And we are still, the same, same questions, the same issues are being raised.
First off, I can comment, we, we don't have the power to stop this. I, I don't know what you've referenced by.
I mean, acknowledge the road.
Just to not let it go.
Uh, but we're not accepting the roads.
Mm-hmm.
We're just laying them up. It's the town meeting and the townspeople that will accept the road or deny it. So, um, we're just putting it forward. And we have to go by what our DPW superintendent has, has visually seen. Seen done in, into, uh, his recommendation has been done properly. So that's what we have to go by.
This, this is not going to make you feel any better, I just want to offer to you, we haven't seen um, this particular neighborhood in a few years, but every few years, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a, a neighborhood in town that started out as a, a community of summer cottages. Over time, those cottages became year round. They are in large part living on what are still private roads. The town does not plow them. They're in, in some cases, in terrible condition to the point where our public safety departments are very concerned about access down there. And when those residents come in to complain, to say, we pay our taxes, we should get our roads cared for, um, the best thing we're able to tell them is that the roads don't meet the standards of what the town needs in order to accept them. And if they have the ability to put that kind of money in, and it's a lot of money, um, then they would be going through this process and they can't get there.
So this will happen to Glenwood Place in a couple of years? And who is gonna pay for it? The five new residents, right, that own the houses there?
Well, no.
Developer?
Well, no, so again, if, if the road is currently in a condition acceptable by DPW, which is what we're hearing tonight, after town meeting, and, and Wayne's perfectly right, this is just one step in several steps. After town meeting, the town will care for your road up to the turnaround.
And I. No, no, I, I got it, yeah. I will be back again in a year.
You should come to town meeting.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. Is there anybody else here from the public to speak to any of the roads?
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Out of Lloyd, twenty-eight Grizzly Drive. I live on lot fifty-one at the end of, of Grizzly. And I just wanted to ask the board, um, today, there is a, an access road across from my, my house that goes out to Brenton. It is one of two entrances to the development. The other one is off of fifty-six onto Vista. I know that's not a permanent road and the long-term plan is for, I believe Blair, to build beyond and continue down Grizzly Drive. I just wanted to put it on your radar to, to get an understanding of when that construction will begin. I do have some concerns on that access road, just, there's a pretty big blind spot to the left of that access road if you're going out that. People do use it regularly. It's not a, a regular road, but I just wanted some assurance that the town will continue to plow that to give that, that exit, but also to hear from Mr. Blair in terms of when he can, when he is going to continue to build and complete the, the development, so there is a real road that exits the development.
So, we've had this conversation, so what was the timeline for the closing of the access road from Brenton into Bear Hill?
You asking me?
Yep.
So, we're, right now, we have permitting as, that we're in the process of doing for Brenton.
Yep.
The, the continuation of Grizzly Drive. As soon as we get, we need a variance from the DCR, we need a four oh one water quality cert from the DEP. We need sewer extension permits that we have signed by the town, but we don't have signed by the DEP yet because we don't have MEPA. Blah, 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 blah. So, all those things we need before, before we can build the road. Um, in the meantime, the, the road that is, is, was put in was already accepted in a town road, not, not a town road, but a, a paper road way back when Brenton Estates was approved back in the eighties. We've agreed to eliminate or go away, leave that road in, in original condition and, and when we put the other one in, we'll bring it back.
Right. Timeline?
Timeline? If I had to really, I'd say probably by a year from spring, I'll have the road in.
Wow.
You're gonna write that down.
Just don't, just don't put any money on it, I know.
That seems hopeful. Gary, um, to what Matt just said, the town is plowing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They don't plow that road.
Okay, we're not, we don't plow that.
So, there will only be, so if you're not gonna plow that access road, there will only be one entrance to the entire estate. So there has been major car accidents at the bottom of Vista before, blocking access to Vista on fifty-six. So, if the town's not gonna plow that access road, there's a possibility that services won't be able to get there.
Well, I, the town doesn't plow it. I know it has been plowed.
Uh, Norm, the planning board made me write them a letter to say that I guaranteed to plow it. So, it says it right in your, in their, in their recommendation. Should be approved, term is, petition should continue to follow, maintain the connected road between Brenton Drive and Grizzly Drive.
And that's your understanding and your.
That's my responsibility. Yes, that's absolutely, I wrote a letter to them saying that.
Our chief is nodding in the back. You're fine with that for now.
Yep.
His point is good. There's only one official access into that, huge, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to keep that on your radar so as we, we can keep Mr. Blair honest in terms of continuing to build that. I do appreciate that all the work has been done, um, and the board, before kind of pausing and giving that punch list, I do wanna just state for the record that it was promised that Mr. Blair could complete in six weeks. It took closer to six months to get everything done. So I do appreciate you listening to the residents last time and really, um, standing up for that. And I appreciate the work that, that you did complete on it.
I can't speak for the whole board, but I just want you to know, um, your neighborhood, it was very unusual. And I think Bob, you commented on it when you first got here, it was very unusual for a neighborhood to speak up um, against the taking of a public way by a town. Sort of against your own personal interests, uh, in favor of sort of getting everything finished. And I, we appreciate that. I appreciated it. Uh, any more questions about the laying of the ways before we move forward?
Can we, uh, see if anybody else wants to speak?
Anyone else?
Seem to have some neighbors here.
No.
Do I have to stand up?
Well, you, you have one right here. You can stand, as long as you're willing to introduce yourself.
Yeah, I, I am. Real brief, real quick, David Van De Geer, seventeen Grizzly Drive. Um, I think we were all here and a few extra to complain when things were not right. Um, and I have to agree, thank you for doing the job, so I, I had nothing to bring up other than I was here to complain, so I'm also here to thank you and definitely wanna echo as well. Thank you, there were some serious concerns. I'm very happy that you listened to them. Um, a little bit of frustration on your side, a little bit of frustration on our side. We wanted it to become a town road. Uh, it took a little bit longer than we'd all had hoped, but um, I wanna thank you for the work you have done. And I'm looking forward to have this become a town road. It was nice. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I would just, um, offer one comment later when we place the articles, um, in regards to, uh, the money owed that Norm referenced. Um, I think it would be nice if we could get that prior to posting. Just gonna put that out there, uh, since the end of the month, Norm is, is Wednesday. I, I'm hoping Quinn could generate that bill in a more timely fashion.
I, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what date we normally get it, but-
No, I know, but if they knew the circumstances.
I have talked with, with Quinn engineering regarding it.
Okay.
And, uh, we will, we will, we will get that done.
Okay.
I'll pay it the minute I see it. I just don't know what to pay. That, that's all. You got it. It's a deal.
Write it down.
Yeah.
It's on camera.
You don't have to. It's on camera.
One of, oh, since we're talking money, I know there was a letter on advice of council that went to your attorney, Mr. Blair, about certifying that any costs associated with this easement's recording of deeds, et cetera, will not be borne by the town.
I didn't know that, but is that, if that's the way it usually works, that's fine. Sure.
All right. Who would like to make a motion? Who would like to start, if you read this whole paragraph?
I will make a motion to lay out Cleland Circle, Horizon Road, Grizzly Drive portion, and Arrowhead Way portion as public ways. Moved for reasons of public necessity and convenience to lay out as public ways the following roadways. The entirety of Cleland Circle and Horizon Road, as shown more particularly on a plan recorded with the Worcester South District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book eight two five, Plan sixty-six. A portion of Grizzly Drive, as shown on a plan in Plan Book eight six six, page sixty, and a portion of Arrowhead Way, as shown on a plan recorded in Plan Book nine one zero, Plan sixty-five. Execute an order of layout of Cleland Circle, Horizon Road, Grizzly Drive, and Arrowhead Way, and to forward the layout order and plans to the town clerk for filing and to town meeting for acceptance as public ways.
Second.
Any comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And the next one?
I get it.
Take it. Thank you.
Okay. It's a motion to lay out Glenwood Place, a portion of Glenwood Place as a public way. Moved for reasons of public necessity and convenience to lay out a portion of Glenwood Place as a town way. Which portion is shown more particularly as proposed extension of Glenwood Place, twenty comma seven eighty-seven dot eighty-eight SF, zero point four eight acres on a plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan located on Glenwood Place and Glenwood Place Extension, Rutland Mass, oh one five four three, dated March twenty-eight, two zero one eight, prepared by New England Environmental Design LLC. Execute an order of layout of said portion of Glenwood Place and forward the layout and plan to the town clerk for filing and to town meeting for acceptance as a public way.
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The easiest one in a long time.
No comment. Thank you very much. Appreciate your-
All right, we are headed back to our warrant. And, yep, the town clerk is here, so we're gonna jump back. Anita, straight to you. Wherever you would like to speak from. Uh, we are on to Article four, which is a sum of five hundred dollars to bind and preserve town meeting warrants, minutes, town reports, street lists, et cetera.
Am I good here, or should I go up there?
Yep.
I don't know. Is she, I, I'm, I'm thinking you might need to go a little closer, even if you sit in the middle, just 'cause you've got right there. But you do have a camera that appears to be focused right at you.
Good.
So, okay.
So I got a couple of estimates. These are, these are basically, um, we haven't found any of our town meeting records. It's the warrants and the minutes, what, we normally back them back-to-back. And we haven't done any of them since, um, nineteen eighty-seven. So I estimate they'll get approximately nine years per volume, so it'll take about three volumes to get that up to date. And that's, um, that's pretty much the priority. We haven't done annual reports and street lists since the late, um, nineteen nineties. And I think that would only take maybe two volumes apiece to get those found. Um, I got a, two estimates, just rough estimates, and one was a local, well, pretty local, a firm in Clinton. And, um, they gave me an estimate for sixty-eight dollars to bind each book, plus shipping and, and handling. So, um, the five hundred dollars should get us up to date at least through twenty seventeen. And, uh, I haven't reached out to her yet, but the town clerk in, I think it was Sterling, just used the, this, um, the company in Clinton. So, and they were, they were quite a bit cheaper than the one, um, the other one that we've used in the past, so.
I'll move to, uh, please, Article four.
Okay.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And then we're jumping over to Article eight, which is, um, it's listed as sponsor board of selectmen, but it's all you.
Oh, the website?
The website.
You, you can sponsor it if you want. Uh, basically, we haven't, um, our website dates back to like tw- two thousand and seven. And when you look at it, you can, you can tell that it dates back that far. If we, uh, it's five thousand dollars to, it would be to, that would include like a custom design, and they would move all the content. And they would do, uh, a day or two of training. It's the same company, um, we dealt with, um, Virtual Town Hall and Virtual Town Schools at the time. They've been, they've merged or been bought out by Civic Plus. But the two gentlemen that we dealt with initially, you probably remember even Sheila, they're still there. That's who I contacted. It would, we'd be able to post directly from the website. Other town departments, more, more town departments would have access uh, to posting their own content, such as the library, or fire department, or anyone that shows. Uh, the five thousand dollars can be, um, can be spread out over two fiscal years if we so chose. And, um, if you want to take a look at other, Hubbardston and Bolton are examples of two towns that have gone from, from, um, what we've had. Also Littleton and Milton, and I think Lexington. But a lot of towns are starting to go that way. It just, um, it makes, it adjusts to whatever device people are using, whether it's their phone or their iPad, so. Is that it?
Think you need to have it, especially if, uh, if we're using that as the, the means to post upcoming meetings, if, if, you know-
And that, that is our official.
It's my understanding, yeah, we can choose one or the other. We have a website, and if the website goes down, we have to, have to get it back up within five hours.
And they've guaranteed that.
Yeah. Okay.
Will the, eh, there be communications sent out to all the departments and everything that?
I mentioned it at the last department head meeting, but it was just briefly, so.
That's fine.
We'll be.
Move to place Article eight.
Second. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
How is early voting going?
Oh, it's going. Um, I think about, we had seventy-six people today.
Wow.
And eighty-eight in the rainstorm on Saturday, so that wasn't bad, but we're up to, uh, by almost four hundred and sixty.
That's amazing. And it's through Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Through Friday, early voting?
Yep.
Please give up the good work.
No, thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to Gary. Back to our articles. So we're back to the packet and the discussion of the Water Enterprise Free Cash.
Okay, we left off on, excuse me, we left off on?
We left off on, um, well, it was in between the Prowler and the CCTV.
Okay, but you've got the, we talked about the, um, pump and motor.
We talked about the processor, we talked about the engineering, the water conservation leak detection, and we were on to CCTV. Well, we kinda talked about CCTV.
Did I, did I mention the pump? I, uh, finished water pump?
No.
That's where you're at.
Yeah, we're on to that.
That's where we're at, okay. Finished water pump. Uh, recently, we put, uh, a ton of money, roughly twenty thousand dollars, I don't have the slips in front of me, into a pump and motor that had failed. Um, there are two pumps, finished water pumps in the plant. One failed and we replaced. Um, without both of those motors and pumps, we cannot distribute water. So, in talking with, um, Mr. Reed, um, I just really felt that because of the age of the other pump, which is twenty-two years old, that we purchased a spare. And the cost of that spare is, um, as listed, uh, twenty-four five, water free cash. Okay? The next thing, what is it? Next thing I had on the list was the media. Now, um, in annual town meeting, this past year, we passed, I, I wanna say forty-six, seven, for some, some work to be done at the water treatment plant. And this media is an integral part of that. So once the, the work is done, um, stripped, sandblasted, repainted, um, it is time for the media to go in. I'd rather have the new media purchased as opposed to trying to recycle the old. And the cost of that is fifty-four ninety-one oh eight. Next would be a new, a, a, a new item on the market. It's a solar float, single quattro. And you have a picture, I believe, in your packet of what it looks like. And it's supposed to control, uh, the algae, uh, the odor, obviously. You'll see what, uh, the radius and, and how that unit would encompass the pond, mushka park. You see the price of it, which is, um, ten thousand four hundred, solar powered, as opposed to, um, a wired unit that would have to be plugged in. Obviously, this sits basically in the center of the pond. My thought is this, uh, 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 about this is, we get a lot of calls, as you all know, in August. Water levels are down, heat's up, and we get the odor. Honestly, my thought on this is, I just don't know enough about it, nor have I found a place that it's been successfully used. You did ask me, the board asked me to look into somehow to control algae. This is what I have so far, um, and that is the cost of that unit.
And that's the cost for a pond of our size?
Yes. You see what it, what it, what it'll show. That's the radius, um, of the, you got a picture of what the solar float looks like, and also what it would encompass of the actual mushka park pond.
And the next level, I'm sorry, the next level would be carbon filter?
Yeah.
Which is really expensive.
Nobody else around uses one of these that you can?
Not that, not that I've, I've found, Jeff, honestly, yet. I, I've asked for references from the company. I just don't have them yet. I mean, I certainly wanna do some research. I'm not just gonna go out and spend ten thousand dollars of the user's water, uh, money to, to purchase something that I don't know about. But I did place it on here because, uh, the board, um, asked me to get some information. So.
Gary, how, how many water users are there?
We have roughly, um, seventeen hundred households. Uh, the next item is simply a, um, um, enclosed cargo trailer for supplies for the water division, so everything can be always loaded and ready to go um, in case of emergency or regular maintenance. Um, twenty-five fifty. Uh, the other item I have, again, is for, uh, security fencing to be upgraded around the water treatment plant. I think you have, did you have the price, um, copy of the invoice or estimate of twenty-eight eight sixty-five? Also to come from water free, free cash. Um, will include new gates in a wider area towards the water treatment plant itself to make way for the bigger trucks that deliver our chemicals and, and so on and so forth, so they can have a, a good area to run on, a better fence than what we have.
Gary, what has CIPC's role been regarding the bigger expenditures with Water Enterprise?
Oh, CIPC. Um, a lot of these, Sheila, have just come up recently. They do have the packet. I have not heard from any of them.
Okay.
But they do have this packet.
What have they done in the past as far as recommendation on your big stuff? 'Cause it wouldn't go in the, in the regular five and ten-year plan that they have, 'cause it's coming out of a separate account.
Um, generally, I've received their support because they understand, um, that money is put there. It's a P and it's, it's certainly not a borrowing. The money is there.
Right.
Um, but they do like to review all, um, products and projects that I put through.
Okay.
Generally, they've been supportive, and, and I think you, um, Sheila, and certainly Skip from way back. Uh, initially, I didn't think I should go through, um, CIPC for these, because that's what we have that money there for. It's not a borrowing. And I know we've had this argument before, and, um, you win. So I, I give them the paperwork, just so they see what I'm planning on, so nobody, uh, has any surprises.
So, CIPC does not look like they are posted. And Bob, I know you talked to them as well, right? And they were, or?
Well, at that point, the only, um, capital item that I had discussed with them was the holder.
Okay. So, CIPC is not yet posted for November? Um, can we reach out to them and ask if they're going to be posting prior to town meeting and kind of alert them that we have a large number coming, most likely from Water Enterprise Free Cash? Um, okay, so if you were keeping track, uh, there is one thing missing that we asked for, although, I, I, Gary, I think both you and Bob weren't worried about where the money would come from, but I do think it's appropriate it comes from water free cash. And that's the well test up at the heights, plus the water quality test. I know that was small money, but it was another twelve hundred dollars. I'm just throwing it in here, 'cause I've been doing totals. So your grand total right now, um, coming out of water free cash, which is at about nine hundred thousand dollars, is one seventy-five seven nine five. So just about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in expenditures from this pool.
Yeah, we have nine eighteen five in water free cash, free cash right now. And you've, a bunch of, seven, it was seven hundred and fifty dollars for the water testing. You put that in there? That's in your total?
I actually put, I added seven fifty plus four sixty, the well test for flow, plus the water quality test.
Good.
Yep. Yes.
Do we have FinCom's, uh, recommendations on each of these highway?
They don't get until after week.
Yeah, they wait till week place. They did hear last week that we had some big-ticket items coming, um, and they were reacting favorably, certainly to security items. For the most part, water is one of those things that you just don't.
Yeah.
Wear out with.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, Gary, nine eighteen what?
Nine eighteen five.
Last question through the chair, please.
Yep.
Uh, so Gary, would, would you estimate that of all these wishli, or all these items, uh, eight plus the, uh, the transfer? Are these all considered critical, and then, critical to the, uh, the well-being of the water supply?
I think the critical ones, like I talked to Bob about today, is certainly, uh, the media. Because that, it's best that that, that, um, process be performed in the right time. So I'd like to get that through. I don't have, um, obviously, I don't have that, that whole list in front of me of what more. I, I gave them all to you, so, um, engineering, definitely. I wanna get that started for the, for the water. Gates, fencing, camera system, though I think that's critical, no? Uh, I think it should be.
Important.
Important, but not critical.
Everything here that's before us is, uh, it's a safe board.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have put them on there if I didn't feel them to be important, but critical? Could, could we afford to have some of them, um, the spare pump? We have a, a new pump now. But I am very, um, leery about running a plant on one pump and not having anything, 'cause it took a long time to get that pump rebuilt. Do I consider it critical? Uh, no, because the system's working.
Yeah.
What I worry about is if one stops working because of the age of it.
Okay.
Parts trailer, critical? Not short money, is it critical? No, but it certainly, it certainly expedites the process for repairs or, or maintenance that we have to do. Okay, we're just trying, I'm trying to view the list, but I think I gave one, I gave you my copy of the actual bullets.
Okay, okay, Kishna, Gary.
So I think the one thing he brought up that was sort of a, he threw it in, something dry, doesn't have a lot of background, it was that, that solar float. And it comes out to about six, a little under six dollars per user. I'm torn. It's, it would be a trial. But is it short money per user for something that we got so many complaints about this, uh, since September?
Yeah. It's a response, and we've asked for something, so he gave us something.
You know, certainly from the floor, given that explanation, it's possible the number could be adjusted. Somebody would say, "We don't wanna spend that ten, we don't wanna spend that whatever," and the number will be adjusted on the floor.
So I guess, Jeff, if, uh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt? I'm sorry. To, to, just to look up this, uh, media for water, um, filtration critical. Finished water pump. Not needed now, but, uh, like I say, if one, if one goes down, uh, it'd be hard to come by real quick. Um, CCTV and the gates, fencing, I think, can, can hold off till annual. Leak detection survey, short money, um, not typically done this, this time of year. Certainly, once we start piling up snow, that can be held- year, certainly, once we start piling up snow, that can be held off till spring. Engineering for, uh, the development, I think that's critical, uh, because we have to get started. It's gonna be a long process to get all those plans, uh, on paper form and start the process of going through the pro, uh, the bidding and so on and so forth for water line replacement. Um, uh, are, are all you talking about is the Water Enterprise, um, Jeff?
Have a moment.
Um, yeah. Yes.
So, if you look at the document that Bob just passed down, the goal here would be to make this all one article, as opposed to what we had in front of us on the draft. It's, it was kind of separated into two, but the list is a lot longer.
Sheila, I'm sorry if I can interrupt, because it's not on this list that Skip gave me, not as well as the processor.
I, I wrote down the processor, and I included that in the total, thank you. Um, so, yeah, this list is, is still incomplete, but we're getting there.
Right.
So, the article that we would be placing instead of articles, uh, where were we? Twenty-three and twenty-five, um, will be placed together, and, and I don't know the number necessarily, but.
So, it's all or nothing?
Well, no, it's one article, but the article's amount, which the motion will contain the total, will be from the floor and could be amended from the floor.
Okay.
So, somebody could make a motion to bring that down if they weren't happy by something. But, yeah, as it stands right now, our grand total on these projects is, I lost my page, one seventy-five-seven-nine-five dot five-four, leaving us with approximately seven hundred forty-two thousand dollars in Water Enterprise Free Cash.
Okay. So, you're gonna merge, uh, article twenty-three and twenty-five?
Right, so if we're placing it, we'll place, uh, article twenty-seven as stated on this sheet we just got.
Yeah, that was just the first crack at putting everything together in one article. Um, also, we did receive today, uh, notification, certification on free cash. Um, the town's free cash is, uh, six hundred and twenty-four thousand five seventy-one, and right, the, the certified number for Water Enterprise is nine eighteen-five, ten.
Can you read the town's number again, please?
Six twenty-four five seven one.
Right.
Thank you.
Next one. Okay. So, uh, Sheila, you ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Motion to merge article twenty-three and twenty-five?
Actually, we'll go off of that individual sheet you just got from KP. Uh, it's at the bottom, article twenty-seven. I don't know why it became twenty-seven, I think she was just going off the end of whatever you have.
Well, I just wanted to mention, this would be the appropriate time if the board wanted to reorder all of these articles. These are just pretty much thrown on here, so no particular order, except that the budget was first.
Why don't we place them all, then we can play with them a little bit, just get through them.
Right.
We're almost there.
Use the important one to keep people in the, at the meeting, right? Keep, keep them at the meeting.
Depends which one you think is important, I think, is the problem.
Motion to, uh, to place article twenty-seven. Second.
Uh, and that just roughly is to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings, that's free cash, for a list of purposes as discussed. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are going to, let's see, we went back and did, um, Anita's, and now we've done, uh, all the Water Enterprise, so now we can actually go back to articles thirteen and fourteen. So, these are the placement of articles for the roads, where we just did the laying of the ways.
Motion to place article thirteen. Second.
Great, okay, and just for reference, that's Grizzly, Cleland, Horizon, and Arrowhead, with, uh, plan references to be completed. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, and fourteen is for Glenwood Place. Make a motion to place article fourteen, the town acceptance of Glenwood Place.
Second.
Comments? Uh, please note, and this will be noted on the, um, warrant for, uh, everyone who attends, that this one will require, and the previous one, a two-thirds vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Onward. Does anyone need a snack? Happy Halloween. All right, did everybody have a chance to review the marijuana bylaws as presented? And I know we've gone through a lot of iterations of them.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we're gonna start with article fifteen. Uh, the placing on that, and, oh, thank God, Norm's still here, is to prohibit all non-medical marijuana establishments under a zoning bylaw, so that will require a two-thirds.
Motion to place article fifteen. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we need to be reading these in the order that they were given to us as a sort of if/then, right? We're doing this sort of flow chart, right, Norm? Okay. So, article sixteen is to allow non-medical marijuana establishments with certain types of establishments permitted in certain districts. There will be a handout that night regarding regulation of non-medical marijuana establishments. So, should article fifteen fail, uh, we would move on to sixteen. Should article fifteen pass, article sixteen will be a no action. And the planning board is prepared with that chain of events. Yes, yes, okay. Does anybody have any questions on article sixteen?
Motion to place article sixteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so seventeen.
Opposed.
Four to one. Uh, article seventeen is the local options three percent tax. Again, we would be most likely taking no action on this should article fifteen be a yes.
Motion to place, place article seventeen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Uh, unanimous? Okay, article eighteen, um... Norm, this actually says zoning. Did, did I miss something?
Um, article, article eighteen is zoning.
Eighteen, I thought, was supposed to be.
General.
General.
Uh, no, 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 no.
Because seven, because fifty.
Article twenty, article twenty is the general.
Prohibit all non-medical marijuana, and eighteen is prohibit.
To extend the moratorium. Nineteen is to extend the moratorium.
Article eighteen.
No, we're on eighteen.
Article eighteen allows everything except retail sales.
I think that had been three, three in the list, right?
Yeah. Prohibit, okay.
Allow all other types, yeah.
Prohibit all non-medical marijuana establishments. Prohibit retail sales of non-medical marijuana. And allow all other types of non-medical marijuana establishments with certain types permitted. Remind me again, so if the first one prohibits everything.
Right.
Eighteen prohibits retail sales, but allows.
Others.
Processing.
Cultivation.
Cultivation, okay. Okay, our placement of article eighteen.
Motion to place article eighteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One opposed.
One opposed? Uh, okay.
Also note that that's a zoning, so that needs to be announced also.
Yep, everything we've listed so far is, uh, two-thirds. Article nineteen extends the moratorium. So, we placed the moratorium with the idea that we needed more time to get our own bylaws and decisions ready, which they are, and we are placing them. Why do we need to extend, why do we need an article to extend the moratorium?
I need to get out.
I guess depends how long it is, I don't know, I don't know.
Uh, I, I, I guess, I have very, very mixed feelings about.
I do too.
This article, extending the moratorium. Uh, yeah, you know, we, we have spent more than six months working on these. I'm not gonna say we may, maybe went through it as, as fast as we might have, but it's been hours and hours to try to, first of all, totally understand the massive laws regarding non-medical marijuana, a- and, and then to look at, among other things, what other towns did, and, and that sort of thing. So, I don't know, just, I guess, I guess a couple of things that, you know, come to my mind, and, you know, maybe people are not gonna look far enough down the warrant to even see that there is an extension of the moratorium. Uh, but, an extension of that moratorium is a kick-the-can-down-the-road article. Uh, and if people do see that, they might say, yeah, I'm not gonna bother getting any of these others passed, we just extend it and let the people go back and do some more work on it. Uh, that, that's number one. Number two, we would certainly have to bring these back at the annual town meeting at the very, very latest. And to be perfectly honest with you, I don't see what we would change that would make it more palatable to, to anyone, y- you know, by that time. So, uh, well, well, I, and I'll, I'll even go a little bit further, uh, on, on that, that, uh, i- if we simply end up passing a moratorium, please go find someone else other than you to try to write this thing. Honestly, and, and I think you'll probably find that the rest of the subcommittee and planning board would be saying the same thing.
They're done.
Uh, we have put so many hours.
Yeah.
I- i- it isn't even funny. So, y- y- you know, whether to put that on, i- it is your decision, as far as the moratorium, and, you know, I'm not gonna, uh, I'm not gonna formally oppose it, okay? I'm just thinking that, uh, I don't think it's the best idea.
If I could, this came out of largely, and I know Norm and I have talked about the strategy, and it wasn't on earlier drafts, and I think this is on here now largely as a result of a conversation that the planner and I had with council earlier today, as a just-in-case, just-in-case everything fails, but also as a reminder, that just in case you wanted to do this, that there's also a planning board hearing that would be necessary, so that, that's a reminder also.
Yeah, it'd have to be done later.
Yeah.
Now, uh, kind of thing. The, the other, the other thing is, you know, a just-in-case, eh, just kind of to my way of thinking, the general bylaw article.
Yeah.
I- i- is what I would more consider, just in case, because it only requires a majority vote.
So, a couple of weeks ago, there were legitimate concerns that none of these bylaws maybe would be quite ready, right? There were still a lot of back and forth, we didn't really know, you know, right up until the hearing, I think. There was a question about whether we'd be ready and whether, you know, in time for town meeting. I would have a hundred percent understood, had the subcommittee been in a position of, we're just not there yet, that we simply would have extended the moratorium. But in the presence of articles that we're now placing, I don't, I don't see the logic of the, the moratorium. These are gonna either pass or fail.
Yeah.
What was, can Bob elaborate on the conversation with the planner and town council as for the reason for this, or?
Oh, it was only, I don't think it was more complicated than what happens if just everything fails, you know? And then you have the, the, the moratorium. And also, as I said, as a, as a reminder that the, the hearing needs to be. But Norm and I have had this conversation, we've, we've talked about this, and, you know, I think the expectation was, just in case that happened, there was the general bylaw.
So, I'd like to make a motion not to place it, article nineteen, on the floor. I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion about it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, you're not placing nineteen?
No.
All right.
Thank you for input, Ms. Anderson.
So, article twenty is now the general bylaw, and that's sort of your lower, lowest level, it only requires a, a simple majority, uh, and that is a, um, full prohibition, but only under the general.
Motion to place article twenty. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, we voted, you can still speak. It's too late now. It's too late.
Just very, very quickly, the, the guidance from KP Law regarding the general.
Yep.
Uh, bylaw prohibition, uh, that they seem to feel that there is some chance, they won't quantify it, uh, but some chance that a general bylaw could be tested in court, okay? And, and therefore, there is something of a risk there. How much it is, I don't, I don't know, but, until it is, until it is tested.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norm, and thank everyone for all the hard work on this, I know it hasn't been easy.
Ditto.
So, I think the question, uh, we have one more actually to place, I think. So, we're all done with marijuana, and, Abby, we placed pilot, did we, or did we skip over it, the pilot? We did place those, yeah. Uh, so the last one we have to place and discuss is article, uh, well, right now it's number twenty-four, uh, regarding the soccer fields. So, uh, right now, it says approximately eight acres of land located at, um, as far as we can tell, the parcel is, um, described as sixty-five Glenwood Road. Uh, it's one parcel that in its entirety is a little over a hundred acres. Um, we do need to talk about the term, uh, right here in the article, it indicates thirty, it was a request from soccer. Um, I would note that our Marshfield lease is a ten with a ten-year extension. Uh, the school district lease, actually, the newest one that was renewed in twenty-sixteen is ten with a ten-year extension, so I, I'm not sure why we wouldn't do that. You know, we had the conversation about how twenty years is a long time. Um, we, Bob, you reached out to the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
And legal feels that it will be a, an add, uh, not an addendum, an, uh, an edit to the current lease with the district.
Right. Because the prob, we, as we understand, that this is part of the parcel that the town has leased to the schools.
Right.
So, that will have to be addressed in an amendment to that lease in order for the town to go through the procedure, as we did with Marshfield, to, um, solicit proposals for a lease for, for this eight acres.
So, to the chair, so then, we've been taking care of this field, and it's supposed to be the school doing it? What's matter with us?
The farmers have been taking care of it.
No, 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 that's not what I said. It's not our responsibility. If we're leasing this to the schools.
No, it's actually part of the agreement, that we do the mowing and plowing. Part of the regional agreement.
So. What are you, plowing?
The roadways, we, we do the plowing.
We always have.
Right.
But, we don't mow the grass.
Do you mow the grass, Gary?
At the schools. Do you mow the grass at the schools?
No, squealing. I mow the ball fields, yes, sir.
No, no, I said, do you mow the grass at the schools?
We mow them the schools. We mow the ball fields. Period.
All the ball fields?
Uh, Naqwa, Central Tree Middle, only Naqwa and Central Tree Middle.
Excuse me.
If they need something with shoulder work or something they can't reach, yes, we do, but only Naqwa and Central Tree Middle.
I was wrong, sorry about that.
Ball fields, not, not the maintenance right around the building, they cut their own grass around their buildings, we do the ball fields.
So, Glenwood has a riding mower, they do the, the front, and they also do their walkways, right? The first thing in the way, but we do the majority of them. I'm sorry?
Yeah, they should be taking care of the field then. The hay field, no?
It's, yeah. Well, I think the idea was that we are responsible for mowing it, and we were allowing hay instead. Water under the bridge, right? Doesn't matter, I don't know.
Water under the bridge.
So, uh...
General, any question?
Would somebody like to speak?
Yes, Jason Stratus, Twenty Arlen Drive, uh, president of Rattling Youth Soccer. Uh, number one, I want to thank everybody for, um, the motion a couple of week meetings ago, I wasn't here, couldn't be here. I've been part of lots of soccer practices and taking my kids to, things happen to be at the same time, so thanks again. And then when it comes to, um, the, uh, the parcel and so forth, of course, yeah, we're talking about the eight acres up on the right. Was that, the, that's clearly defined in terms of what will be edited on the lease Was that, that's clearly defined in terms of what will be edited on the lease with the school?
So, what's going before town meeting is just the process to allow us to enter into a lease agreement with you. There's a lot of steps before that, that because of the existing lease will include dealing with the district.
Right.
But we wanted to make sure that it was delineated enough that it allowed for a little bit of flexibility in that eight acres and where it ended. Because as we all know, the parcel itself is not at all separated on the assessor's mound.
Right.
It's one big parcel.
Okay. So the only question before us is the term of the lease, or term...
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, to that point, there may have been messages that the 10 plus 10 was unacceptable to you, but that's not the position of myself or the board in entirety. So if that's the terms that have been in place for other lease agreements for other sports in town, then it's acceptable to us as well.
Do we know what the original Marshfield agreement was?
Ninety-nine years.
Oh, 99 years? Well, this is a bargain, a 30.
Well, it was 99, and then there was no lease for 15 years, and so, no more than that.
Okay, because, I mean, this is 10 and 10, but they're gonna be doing a lot of front work up front, and then the rest is just extended, so.
I think we went through a lot for the Marshfield leash about doing 10 and 10 just so that it wasn't, it didn't become so obsolete that everybody forgot about it.
Yeah, and also just to renegotiate. It's worked because with the school district, we've seen that, you know, over years, changes needed to be made on both sides. And it just got you all, got everybody updated where they need to be.
So, Jason, 10 and 10 is comfortable with the soccer?
Right, yeah, so, you know, we obviously want as long as is available with the investment that's gonna be made. But, you know, if there's some sort of standard in place for this type of agreement, you know, then we're very grateful for that.
I mean, it's a fairly new standard, you know?
Yeah, yeah, obviously, the difference between us and baseball, which we get very specific, is they have already invested a lot more money on their space than we have not invested yet.
On the flip side, heaven forbid something happened and Rutland Youth Soccer is no longer sustainable. It's a 10-year, plus 10 years, and not a 30 or 99 year.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, our organization has a long history in town as well, so hopefully that's not the case.
It was funny, I had the same discussion, I think, with people over at baseball, and it's, you enter into these with an understanding of a certain amount of faith on both sides that this is going to move forward in 10 years, and 10 years is really just a Malatian pick.
I think we need to be exactly consistent with whatever verbiage we're doing with Marsh. Right?
And the wording, if you look at the article, I mean, it has to say for recreation purposes. I mean, it has to go through a public process, so it couldn't specifically say Rutland Youth Soccer.
Yeah, of course.
And we have the rest of the information. Abby got the book and page number, and with everything back and forth today, we didn't have a chance to plug that in yet, but that's among the other stuff that we can take care of.
And just last clarification, so whatever we're going to do with Marsh is 10 and 10.
Marsh right now is 10.
Marsh is 10 and 10, that's the deal. Okay, right.
I'll make a motion to place Article 24, to see if the town will vote to authorize the BOS to lease for recreation purposes the land at Glenwood Elementary School.
Modification on the term? This one's written as...
With the modification of 10-year lease with a 10-year extension.
Great.
Second.
Any more comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? All right, to Bob's point, we have two things to do. One is to make a motion with the language he requested regarding edits coming out of Legal and the TA's office relative to the final form.
Do you want that? I can pass that down.
And we could do that now, we could do that after we, is there anything we want to move around?
Yeah.
Yes.
We want people to stay?
I mean, I...
I see they're leaving now.
See what happens? Yeah.
Do you have a question about order?
Actually, no.
Oh.
I did not hear, and maybe I missed it, so I apologize. Public consumption of marijuana prohibition?
We, you're correct, we are not considering placement of that this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
However, I haven't even called for, now that I'm thinking about it, public comment yet, so if you want to comment more about that later, you can...
No, that's fine, thanks.
Okay, so to your point, yeah, there's always some chess game kind of logic in how you place the articles. I like the idea of placing the straightforward budget things first. So everyone who went to Maytown meeting is going to be well aware of making whole all the municipal departments, having the secondary conversation about all of the searches we're doing, executive searches. Then we go straight into the expenses. Just to recap on our expenses, so we have 624, 571 certified free cash number. If we automatically set aside, which is part of our financial policy, is $150,000 for FY 2020. We have approximately 100 going into the three savings accounts, that's next in line. Or I would say it should be after the municipal department expenses. We then go down into our holder, and you can kind of go from big to small. Holder is the largest item, then you've got the tax title expense at 15, fence at 10, the public safety heat and AC unit at 5200, the 5,000 for the website, 1,000 for the library, 500 for binding. That grand total gets us to $148,000 left after expenditures. So again, we've started with 624 and certified free cash. We're gonna put 250 in savings, 150 for FY 2020, 100 into the savings accounts. We're gonna spend approximately 221,000. It then leaves us with another 148 to move over into spring free cash. That could cover things like a bad winter, the snow and ice accounts, you never know. It's relatively good shape. Of course, I actually did talk to Margaret via text, and her first comment was, well, it's not as big as it was last year, the free cash number, but relative to where we were not too long ago, this is a wonderful place to be in, where we can save some money, put some money aside for FY 2020, do some of the expenditures that we know we needed. This holder has been on the list for god knows how many years.
And make our budget holes from last year. Like, I mean, like, we had cuts.
Yeah, it was a very contentious meeting. Anyway, back to...
So I like the order that you just proposed, Sheila, kind of the savings, the, and then going, the savings, the making whole, the municipal expenses, and then, yeah, large to small.
So should OPEB stabilization and capital stabilization get moved up?
Yes. So we'll go, so we'll go general government, make whole the three savings accounts. And then in order of expense, holder, tax title, fence, public safety, website. I can send this over to you after you finish.
We don't, do we have to vote on the 100? Because that's financial policy, so it's there, okay.
Right, it's not being placed or moved anywhere. It's staying in free cash.
Okay.
So after we do the money, that leaves us with the streets?
When should we, when do we, does this, will this include, will the money include the water, water and sewer free cash?
No, so that's its own article. Let's say we want to do water after all the general government?
I don't know. I feel like if we're spending, we should get all the spending out of it.
Well, I think we should get everything out of the way and just do the street acceptance and then the...
Streets and marijuana at the end.
All right, so that means it's water enterprise, then we'll do the pilots.
So that one.
Yep. Then we'll do the soccer field. Then we'll do storm water.
Yeah, I was gonna say water, storm water.
Yep.
And then the street acceptance.
Street acceptances, and all the marijuana.
Yep.
Because storm water does not require two-thirds, correct? That's not zoning?
You have the sewer one too, Sheila, I didn't hear you say sewer one.
The which one?
Sewer line.
That'll be up front too.
That would go with water, I would assume water and sewer.
No, he's talking about his transfer article, yeah, we should, we need to put that one up front. You know what, we'll put that one before, before water.
Was that voted on?
Sewer and then water. Yes, we did, because that was the two old articles that we were moving on.
Sure, we get the heat unit in first, we know what these guys do.
When is kickoff?
Eight, 7:30. Chief, yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Enjoy your evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
When you say transfer article, you mean the late bill?
The late bill.
Yes.
All right, so...
So my question was, does storm water require two-thirds?
I believe it does not, does it live? No, which already...
So, yeah, I would say do that before any street acceptance, because street acceptance is two-thirds. And then go into the marijuana, a lot of those are zoning.
Whoa. How do you know he likes that, huh?
He said he wanted a piece of candy, he didn't want to come up and get it. So I got a bad arm.
You saving it for the ride?
Yeah.
Thank you for the candy, Sheila.
Oh, my pleasure. Is there, let's see, it's time to go back to the, what?
You still working on it?
No, I think we're done.
Well, we have a motion for the review.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the warrant with all the changes. Subject to review and approval by town council as to the form of the articles, and to authorize the town administrator to make such changes as he deems appropriate based upon such review.
Second.
Aye.
Aye, great.
Okay.
One thing left on that.
Bids. Which were opened on Thursday.
Well, I think Erin and I talked about that today, I don't know if you're still looking at the submittal, but I thought we would do that. Are we ready for roof bids tonight? I thought we'd do that the next meeting.
Okay.
I have them.
And let's do it, until we don't have to worry about next meeting, we got them up on the next... You still have stuff to review on them?
No, all reviewed. I didn't know they were on, but Nancy put all the things together, and I happened to see him. I checked the agenda before I left the office, so I do have them here. We've got four bids ranging from the high of $307,000 to the low of $165,000 by WPI Construction. So I'm here to recommend that we give 2 WPI Construction that you stick. They have a 30, I'm sorry, 90-day completion, that was posted, that was in the... Proper posting times, notifications. The bid opening was last, I don't know, last Thursday. And that's what we got. $165,000 is actually what we have put aside in the article for the public safety and library.
All right.
I could add, as part of this, and as part of the scope for the contractor, these railings that are on this building or Widow's Lock or whatever Rutland calls them are all just gonna come down. I mean, if you look at them...
Removing?
Yeah, I don't know, they're worth the work. And actually, the librarian considers them hazard because of snow, so those will just come down.
Move it with this company, Gary, WPI.
I have not used them before, but they do have a good reputation. All their paperwork was in order, so.
Gary, guaranteed no change orders.
What?
You're guaranteed no change orders.
No change orders.
All right.
Let's go. So, motion to be made? Make a motion that we approve the contractor, WPI Construction, Inc. for $165,000 for the Rutland Public Library and safety, public safety building.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have anything, Bob?
Honest, no.
They gotta be done before Christmas, or what?
90 days.
90 days?
90 days.
Ain't gonna quite make Christmas.
They won't be done before I leave, sir. They won't be done before I leave.
So you can't leave yet.
So.
But you start a project, you gotta finish it.
Oh, okay. It's more than a Milky Way.
We had a lot of public comment before specifically about the street layouts, but is there anybody here for public comment?
Oh, come on.
Oh, there is somebody.
I just wanted to say that we've had some heavy rains so far. Everything is holding up very well, and I just wanted to say thank you again to everybody for coming together, and DPW for all of their work outside of the building as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna hurt somebody, thank you. What's going on here?
All right, Bob, is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Aye, I'm all set.
Okay, good.
Skip says I'm all set.
All in favor?
Aye.